From wherever he was.
All this meeting the order, welcome everyone to the May thirteenth, twenty twenty four. Town board work session and regular meeting. Would you all please join me with a pledge? Councilman Granville is excused tonight. And we'll start off our work session with the. Community solar campaign and I'll let Luke.
Yeah, yeah, I see Brad is here. Maybe Brad can come up, but again, this is one of the. Initiatives of the climate smart community task force, which is recommended, looked at the, we had an RFP. That we put out maybe two months ago about looking for community solar providers. Power market was chosen by climate smart community task force is the recommended. The recipient or winner of that. And so we have an M O U and resolution on the agenda for today. This really is a, it's a, it's a great program, but it's barely complicated. And it sounds too good to be true. And so that's why Brad is here because there is confusion with former. Community solar sort of campaigns and there's a difference now. And I mean, the main thing is that if you sign up for solar, you get. Up to a 10% discount credit on your electricity bill. And for us, what that means is if we can get one hundred and sixty, which is our goal, if we get forty five thousand back from NYSERDA, do you know that number? I think it's forty five thousand. Thirty five thousand. Plus, that would be another priority action for us, which would then put us to receive other funds. And we think it would be about ninety thousand. Dollars coming back to the town of Aurora for signing up one hundred and sixty people to get a 10% discount. On their electricity bill and be using solar energy. So it really does seem too good to be true. And that's why we have Brad here on the hotspot to, uh, to drill with any questions to, to think about where there may be holes in that. But we're pretty confident that they were extremely confident that there are not. So. With that, the only is if you can talk into the microphone, because we do record these and there are people sometimes online. And so even though we can hear you, it's good to be in the microphone.
Absolutely. Is this? So I have a few prepared remarks and then we can open it up to any questions you might have. That sounds okay. Again, my name is Brad Tito. I'm with Power Market. My title is the Director of Community Energy. Uh, I'm based here in Orchard Park and I'm just a stone's throw away. We spend a lot of time here in East Aurora. Uh, in fact, we come here all the time. So, um, anyway, uh, so let's see. Thank you very much for the opportunity to present today. Uh, Power Market, we have extensive experience. With municipalities in New York, uh, probably over forty municipalities. We've either enrolled their municipal buildings into community solar. Saving them in their municipal budget or doing these community campaigns. Which we've done more than a dozen of these types of campaigns and they've been quite successful in terms of getting hundreds of people to enroll in these, in these projects. And, uh. At Power Market, we don't just do it in New York State. We're active in ten US states. We have eighty thousand. Utility accounts that are connected to community solar across these ten states. So we've really seen it all with respect to this. Very specific opportunity called community solar. Uh, where there's a larger project out in the country, you see these driving down the highway sometimes. They have maybe six hundred different, uh, utility accounts, households that connect to these projects. Uh, we think of them as generating electricity and certainly they do. But in New York, under the regulations, they generate something called utility bill credits. We figure out what portion of that big project. Goes to each specific account based on your historic usage will give you a certain percentage of the credits that come off of that. Project. Those credits go on to your. NYSAG utility bill. We don't collect any payment information from you. We never charge you any money. We don't do any credit scores or anything like that. It's simply an opportunity that you can think of as a nice egg opportunity to lower your utility bill. If you want to sign up for it, uh, then you can through this campaign. And NYSERDA provides specific benefits, uh, to municipalities that undertake these kinds of campaigns. And if you enroll your municipal buildings as well, uh, but it's under the NYSERDA Clean Energy Communities Program. There's specific grants for a high impact action called. Community campaigns for community solar. The more signups you get, there are these threshold numbers, the more money you'll get from NYSERDA that you can use match free. For additional clean energy projects. It will also contribute getting you one step closer to silver certification under the Climate Smart Communities Program. So there's new opportunities for grants and recognition by successfully completing a, a, a program of this type. We're talking about a community solar campaign. The objective is to educate. The town about community solar to connect residents to a community solar project and to support your objectives, which. Uh, we expect will be related to achieving the grants and recognition through these state programs. Uh, the goal, as Luke mentioned, was to get a hundred and sixty signups. We'll get you at least sixty signups. Uh, it really depends on how the campaign has responded to. We've done this in many different places. We've seen different kinds of enrollment rates. So it just depends on how the community responds. But if we do all the things that we've talked about, there's a very good chance that when we're done. This should be maybe three or four percent of all of the households in the town. Sign up for community solar through this opportunity, which would equate to about a hundred and sixty, uh, or more. Uh, signups. The project itself is in Dickinson, New York, outside of Binghamton. Um, it's, uh, again, it's got room for about six hundred people. Uh, this is a no cost opportunity for the town. There's no cost to the town. There's no top cost to the residents that participate. Uh, and we use a combination of marketing materials, letter-based outreach. We provide customer support. We have a team of New York employees that are Power Market employees that answer the phone when you call the. Support line. Uh, they are aware of the town's campaign and would respond accordingly. And help to answer any questions, not only for people interested in enrolling, but people that are already enrolled if they have any questions. Uh, um, and the key is we create the custom landing page of people go to sign up online. All the marketing materials, the letter-based outreach, all that points people to this kind of easy signup form on. Uh, online and it's customized for the town of Aurora. You know, people save money. They're supporting clean energy, helping the town achieve its objectives of getting grants and recognition. And that's really the benefits of the program. We have a very collaborative approach and we would be working very directly with you. I'm your point of contact throughout the campaign. Uh, we'll work with the Climate Smart Task Force with the town itself. And, uh, we generally have a kickoff call. We do regular meetings. Regular reports to show you how the signups are going and we can get you involved in how to kind of increase the numbers, uh, as we get further along. Um, so we'll, we have a detailed, uh, marketing and outreach plan that we would, uh, employ. Uh, and, uh, again, this isn't our first time around. We have in just the last few months. Uh, worked with, uh, I have examples of six different communities that, uh, we've targeted sixteen thousand households. And we've gotten, uh, over eight hundred enrollments. Uh, so, uh, engaging with those sixteen thousand households. That's an enrollment rate of three point eight percent. All that the town would need was two point nine percent in order to get the maximum grant through the program. So. Why I tell you that is because it's within our track record. If you look at our most recent campaigns. We've gotten higher enrollment rates than what you need to max out these grants through NYSERDA's program. Um, and with that, I'll just reiterate, you know, this is a potential to save your constituents. Quite a lot of money when it's taken collectively across a hundred and sixty households, each saving maybe a hundred and fifty bucks a year. It's not a lot of money, but it adds up and every dollar counts. And so we'd be also contributing directly to. Uh, New York State's clean energy goals, your local town of Aurora goals. Uh, and we look forward to working closely with you and I'm happy to provide any answers to any questions you might have about this program. Thank you very much.
I have, I have one. Let's just say someone signs up for it and, and it's not quite what they expected. Do you sign up for a term or can you get out of it with thirty days notice or how does that work?
So the contract is a ninety days notice, written notice, no fees or penalties. The ninety days just gives us time to tell the utility to remove your account. And that's usually what the hangup is. The ta, the, the utility takes one or two billing cycles. So we say ninety days. But there's no fees or penalties. If you move out of the area, you don't have to take any action whatsoever. It all just gets taken care of and removed from your bill when you close that account. Uh, no cost to join, no cost to exit.
Yep. So a couple of questions are, would there be any customers that would be ineligible? Any residential customers that we ruled ineligible for this program?
So only ones that use an extremely low amount, which is less than a thousand kilowatt hours a year. They have that threshold just to say it's just too small to even deal with. Nobody has a thousand, you know, uh, it's more, much more typical to have five, six, seven thousand kilowatt hours a use, uh, a year. For small commercial, there's a threshold of if you have a demand metered account, it has to be less than twenty five kilowatts. Uh, which is just the size of that account. What it means is that, you know, spot coffee or, you know, the. Bagel shop, they're gonna be okay. You get into larger manufacturing facilities or larger businesses. That's too big.
And people have solar panels on their house.
That's right. If you have solar panels, the state has a rule, either you do rooftop solar or you do community solar, you can't do both. Thank you.
And so, so did, I, I'll, I'll ask the question that's probably on everybody's mind, right? So. And correct me if I'm wrong to set this up. First of all, you have your. Distribution costs from NYSAG. Then you have your electricity supply cost, which is generally from NYSAG, but could be from any other. Anyone else providing energy. That doesn't change. What you do is you get an additional line on your bill, which is credits minus. Up to 10%.
That's correct. So the 10% counts against your delivery, your supply and your miscellaneous charges. Uh, and it's itemized on your monthly electricity bill, what that savings is, it's a negative number. And you can have a third party supplier like an ESCO or not, you could get it from NYSAG, none of that matters. We're just applying these credits in that miscellaneous charges section of your bill. And the savings will vary from month to month, depending on the sunshine. Because the project is generating these credits and they're generating fewer when it's less sunny and more when it's more sunny. If it's very sunny, you get the full 10% savings and then whatever's in addition to that, any surplus, that goes to the next month. Right? So you get these credits and they accrue in your account and that's how you achieve these 10% savings every month, but it will vary from month to month.
You had mentioned rooftop solar panels. But I'm assuming site, like site mounted solar panels also.
Yeah. So our project doesn't involve any installation of any solar panels on anybody's property.
No, no, I mean, as far as you're not eligible.
Right. So if you have in your backyard or on your roof, if it's on your property, you're not eligible.
Cause you, you said just, just rooftop and I want to make sure that.
I know this distracted at the consumer, but you mentioned municipal buildings as well. Do you have a track record of municipalities signing up for this as well?
We do. In fact, we have many more that have signed up for their municipal buildings and facilities. Uh, than we do with these campaigns. Uh, so probably, and I've got a list I could show you. It's, uh, probably over forty municipalities in New York alone that have signed up through us.
Okay. And they're also 10%?
Yes.
So the question that embarrassed mind is, well, how do, how does this work financially, right? How does it happen that you give a 10% discount on your bill?
Right. So when a project developer in New York State is, is looking at building a solar project of this type. They're looking at the incentives, very generous incentives from New York State to build these projects. If they're going to get those incentives, they have to comply with all of these regulations that dictate how the credits get applied on people's bill. Ensuring that they receive the financial savings that we are shoring them of achieving as a result of their participation. When the project developer builds the project. They're very good at finding a piece of property, building the project, interconnecting it to the grid, but they don't want to deal with the customers. Cause you could have six hundred people on one project. So they hire somebody who's very good at. This job, which is like a power market where we have a tech, technology platform. We have a means of tracking all the people's. Credits on their bills. We interface with the NYSAG or the any utility to make sure that those credits are applied accurately. We have the customer support services and we do all of these things and it's a cost of the development of that project. Once that project is up and operating, then it follows all the rules and regulations that New York State has established. To ensure that people get this 10% discount on the credits that are applied to their bills.
So it's a way of saying, we're all paying the tax money. And if you sign up, you get some of that.
You're getting it back. That's right.
Very good.
I mean, it's, yeah, it's an exciting thing and, um, we're really looking forward to it. The one thing I can add about. Uh, two things, the village of East Aurora would be included in this. We did confirm that with NYSERDA. So it is in within the town and the village is not doing their own program. So. Um, if you are a village resident and qualify, then you'll also be able to sign up. Uh, the second thing is that there, there is a little bit of competition on this. Um, the village of Hamburg is also signing up. And so we do, there is an element of time and that, you know, the more, the quicker people sign up, then you have your spot within this specific project. Not that we couldn't open it up potentially with other projects and things down the road, but if you want to be on the timeline that we've set. The quicker the better. So if you want to sign up for this, keep an eye out for it. And then I think the, the. Um, the third thing is that we do have the climate smart community task force, which is committed to, uh, advertising at the. The, one of the many, um. Farmers markets we have and, uh, outside the co-op and so many other places. So. We do have a number of volunteers and we will be partnering with ACES, the Aurorans for Climate Environmental Sense. Um, who also volunteers that want to help participate in this project. So hopefully we'll have a robust campaign. That, uh, will get people signed up so that the town then can benefit from the, uh, the NYSERDA money that hopefully will be coming back.
Are you going to hit the typical places Luke too? Like, like the advertiser and, and.
Yep, I already talked to the advertiser. Yeah. I talked to Shelley, um, at the advertiser, uh, gave her heads up about the story. And so we need to get a press release, I think, to, to send over. Um, I told her to listen to this and to look at the materials online. Uh, we'll be doing Facebook. We'll be doing, you know, all the, the, the usual ways.
So presuming that we, uh, approve this tonight, how early would we be ready to start signing up?
So we like to apply like a three week plan to getting the thing launched. So in the first week, we would ask you to identify a contact person at the town that can. Uh, answer questions about the town's involvement. Power Market can take any and all questions that are technical or enrollment, really whatever. But it's good for the, uh, constituent to know that the town is behind this, so they have somebody to call. Uh, we will also in that time, the first week, prepare all the marketing materials, get them over to you for your review. Everything is subject to your review and approval as the town, uh, before distribution. You'll have a week to think about it and look at it and comment. And if we want to make any changes, we'll make those changes. At the end of week two, we'll be ready to send out a letter to residents. We'll have the, uh, marketing materials printed. And, uh, delivered to the town hall. We like to have community volunteers, maybe members of the task force. You know, put it in taste at the bulletin board, put it at the community center, you know, put some of the flyers. Uh, here at the town offices, things like that. And by week three, the letter has arrived in people's, uh, uh, mailboxes. The marketing materials are all distributed. In the meantime, we've gotten the press release issued. And before you know it, we've got this whole campaign and it's, it's, it's pumping on all cylinders and you're seeing dozens of people coming in. Uh, over the course of just a few weeks.
And I'd like to commend you on, uh, at first you said spot, which obviously is not in East Aurora and you changed it to taste just now.
I realize that just as I was.
That was well done. That was a good adjustment on the fly.
But I was thinking about. This other place. Yep. So.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next on the work session is the, uh, appointment of. Two alternates to the planning board. I know that Ray and Jim. And you're the team, um. To, to interview them along with Chairman Crowe. Would you like to speak on that briefly?
Yeah, I think we're really fortunate in the fact that, and you know, chime in Doug anytime. Uh, that we have three great candidates for the position. And at that, as we started, it was one position. And then in talking to Doug and examining the current board. The people that we have, the expertise, uh, on the current board, we also realized that everyone's busy. And at times it's difficult to have a quorum. So we discussed the possibility of adding. An extra alternate to the planning board. And we examined that. I know Martha took a look at it. I did as well. And there's no restriction in state law to. How many people are on the planning board as alternates? So Doug is amenable to that. We had two great candidates, Chelsea Root, um, grew up in. Orchard Park. Um, I know. Uh, grew up in Orchard Park, a local business person, has a business here in town, uh, Realtor. Great background, different perspective. So I think she'll add an awful lot. And then, uh, William Height. Who works for, um, he's an architect. He works for probably the most prestigious architectural firm. In Orchard Park on Main Street or on twenty eight. So. He has great background as well, obviously in different areas. He has the technical expertise. So as far as site plans, seeker. That technical expertise, I think will be very, um. Beneficial to the board. So they'll be able to teach people that are currently on the board. The current board members will be able to mentor those people. So I think we're well positioned for the future by, um, bringing those. Two people aboard.
Is it fair to say that William is your favorite person at that firm?
Second favorite.
I, 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 I don't want to comment. They're all great people.
Chairman Crowe, anything you'd like to add to that? Anything else?
Sounds good. Okay.
Thank you, Ray. You bet.
Next on the work session is the, um. Subscription based I T contracts, uh, that. The last ones were based on leases and this is a state mandated, mandated. Requirement. Does anybody have any further questions about this? Right? You don't. Okay. Next, there are some highway promotions. Dave, you want to tell us about these?
Yeah, Supervisor Schneider and, uh, Town Board. I'm real pleased to announce these. Um, these are some vacant positions. They've actually been vacant for a long time. Uh, our working crew chief position hasn't been filled in thirteen years. And, uh, we finally have a really good candidate that has been with us now for almost thirteen years. And he has served as deputy for three and, uh, this will be a, a good promotion for him to reward him. For all the good things he does. Now, his deputy officially is not in charge unless I'm not here. So this actually puts him a title higher than the M E Os in the town. So it kind of causes a little bit of a conflict when I am here. So it's a good thing to finally fill this. Uh, we've been waiting a long time for the right person. So I, I'm pretty sure, uh, Justin won't let us down there. Uh, next we have a M E O position that we didn't fill from three years ago. Um, and Mr. Engelfinger again, uh, has done everything. For the past six months to train on all of our equipment. In fact, he was on the roller today in the rain, oiling and chipping. Um, so I'd like to move him up to that position. And then finally we have Jordan Schneider here, which is a M E O position that we didn't fill almost two years ago. And, uh, Jordan is, uh, really taking our tree crew to another level, uh, in addition to a lot of the equipment. So we're in really good hands with these young men, um, to keep promoting them. They're our neighbors, our workers. And I'm proud to bring them to you. Um, the last one is more a formality. It's, uh, Mr. Colin Voss. Because, uh, Nick is now moving up into a mortar equipment operator position. We're going to need a new person to help run the shop, uh, for now. So. He's, uh, in training in there. He'll still be working with Nick, um, but he's doing a really good job too. So a little bit of, uh, moving up, but. Long overdue. So appreciate if you can support this, um, because this is a really long agenda. Maybe you wouldn't have to have these guys stay till the end for your vote. Uh, you know, if you're not comfortable with this, you know what I mean? So any questions on that?
Uh, I'm comfortable with it. Dave, you've always made great recommendations and handled your whole highway department very well, in my opinion. Uh, if you recommend that they should be promoted to these positions, I'm in favor of that. Is everyone else buying with that?
Congratulations, gentlemen. You guys do good work. We see it every day.
Yeah, thank you. Good job, guys. Yeah, thank you. We have a really good team and it's good to keep them and, uh, keep moving them up. Okay.
I'm a little disappointed that they don't want to stick around though.
Well, they actually. They gotta be in at five thirty. We start oiling at six tomorrow morning. So I'd rather them go home and get some rest and not have an excuse to sleep in. So.
That's fine.
All right, guys, have a good night.
Certainly head out if you want. Next is a request from Chris regarding, um, seasonal recreation employees. These are bonuses. Is, oh, Chris, you want to just give us a highlights of that?
Uh, yeah, so, so these are same thing that we did last year, same, um, bonuses, same structure. Um, it's just to kind of bridge the gap between lifeguards at the town level versus the state level, uh, in terms of pay rate. Um, and it incentivizes them to be doing the right thing and, and working and not just getting raises. Because they're there, but because they're doing good things there. So, uh, same thing with our rec staff as well.
Any questions, anyone? Pretty good. Next, we have some planning board recommendations. Um, the first one. Is the property on twelve old Glenwood Road. Is there anyone here representing that piece of property? Would you like to step up to the mic and say a few words?
Hi.
Hi. Name and address, please.
Mona Cook, seven eight eight six Ellicott Road, West Falls.
And you have a mind of doing just a quick overview?
Okay, I'm the real estate agent, um, representing both, uh. The seller and the buyer in this transaction. Um, twelve old Glenwood is the, I don't know how many people remember it, the old in Kahoots bar on the corner of. Davis and Old Glenwood that's been vacant for probably three plus years. The, uh, two upper, the, the second floor is two apartments that have been completely renovated and are rented at. Really good rates right now. The bar is still, yes, is, is the bar. Um, I've had the property on the market since February. No one was interested in, um. Opening a bar. Uh, but I had several that were interested in converting it to all residential. And that's why I'm here tonight, um, to, uh, try to get this moving to moving it to R three, which would allow. The bar area to be converted to two or three residential apartments. We need the, we need the zoning changed in order for that to happen. And actually our, um. We are under contract, but it's contingent on. The zoning being changed so that they can move ahead with their plan because if we can't, they're going to back out. So it, it's, while I was here last week or whatever, whatever that other meeting was, it seemed like we had full support. To see apartments, a place being rev- revitalized versus sitting vacant and deteriorating. So I'm just asking you to support and get their place moving and pretty again.
Well, tonight we'll be asking our attorney to draw up a, a local law and then we'll set a public hearing and you'll know just exactly how everyone feels then.
Okay. Okay. So there's what, what goes on from here, just so I can update my clients.
Tonight we'll ask the local attorney, our, our attorney to draw up a local loss.
Okay. So you're the town attorney?
She's the town attorney. And, and then in the next meeting, I, most likely we'll set a public hearing. For the following meeting and, uh. Then after that.
Any like idea of a timeline on that?
Well, the next meeting, we will probably have the local law, I'll say, which will be two weeks from now. We'll set the public hearing for two weeks after that.
So we're talking at least a month.
Yes.
Okay.
And then we'll, we usually don't vote. The night of public hearings, although tonight we're certainly going to make a few exceptions. But we usually don't vote on the night that we have the public hearing. So if you. Could probably count on six weeks.
Okay.
Three meetings.
Okay.
So by, by law, right? We have to have the law drafted. In order to do that, we have to have a decision tonight. And then when the law is drafted, then we have to allow the public. The opportunity to give their thoughts about the law and the project, which is yet next two weeks. And then the two weeks after that, then we have to consider all of the comments that the public, if there are any, that the public has made in relation to it. That's why there's the timeline set to.
Okay.
Make sure we go through those.
Okay, um, this, this, um, meeting tonight is the last meeting that I had on my schedule. I don't know the, the next dates. Would somebody inform me of those dates?
Uh, twenty.
It fall, it falls on Memorial Day.
Was it, it fall, it falls on Memorial Day, I think, right? So it'll be Tuesday. Yeah. So.
That Tuesday, right after Memorial.
Twenty eighth.
Twenty eighth.
So the next meeting is the twenty eighth?
Yes.
But we're just, I, I know you've had to give this presentation several times. So just, we'll just be considering the local law. I don't know that you necessarily need to present at that meeting. Does anybody disagree with that? I, I know you've gotten up and sort of explained this. I'm sorry, at the, the planning board meeting, explaining it, you know, I, I don't know that explanation will be necessary.
The next meeting, we will just be setting the public hearing.
Okay. So I won't necessarily have to be there.
But you should be at the one after that.
The public hearing?
Yes.
And someone will in, inform me of when the public hearing is?
Uh, should be the tenth.
Of June?
That would be the target to, yeah. June tenth.
It'll be in the advertiser. It'll be on our Facebook page.
Okay.
Website.
And our website.
Okay. 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 That'll work.
Okay.
All right. Thank you.
Yep. Thank you. Next we have a request for a campground on Sweet Road. Is there anyone here would like to come forward and just speak to us briefly on that? Well, you know, if you don't want to, Karen, you don't have. Just to tell us briefly, you know, it's, it's, um, only for three days, right? Sixty hours and.
Yeah, it's during Borderland. Uh, on our property, we have thirty acres. We're looking to use like ten acres of it to use. We were at the planning board meeting last two weeks ago.
Yep.
Uh, they suggested we could have fifty sites for the sixty hours, which is Erie County's cutoff before you have to follow all their guidelines. Um, due to our ignorance of not knowing, we needed a special permit. We have done this in the past and I can tell you that uh, the majority of the campers come, come and go and, uh, during my morning walk to say greet everyone, make sure everyone's good. There's like Blue Eyed Baker and Elm Street Bakery and Tim Hortons. Like they're definitely staying in the town and the village and spending their money if they have a place to stay to do that. So, um, and our property is very secluded tree lines to keep everyone in and they spend the entire day at the festival. So during the day, there's really no one on the property. Wilson and I are always on the property when, while this is going on. And we have a quiet time. It starts at eleven. So they sleep in, they go to bed and then they get up and they repeat. And so we're just looking to continue that if the board pleases.
Yep.
So. But, yes.
I know you're trying to get under the sixty hours, but when do people come and when do they leave? Because my math gets you more to seventy two hours.
Well, that would be great, wouldn't it? But, but Erie County, um.
No, I understand, but.
Yeah. So.
Practically speaking.
Practically speaking.
Friday afternoon till Monday morning.
Well, interestingly enough, um, people do still work. Uh, and the, the site that we advertise on, which is called Hip Camp, you can specify when you come in, you can't come in until Friday night at six, six P M. And you must be off the property by Sunday evening by whatever that is. I know I spelled it out on the.
Oh, do you have?
So you can, you can, you can specify that they have to get off. And then if, you know, if no one is coming in until Saturday, which is often, of course, they've changed. They keep progressing the festival, but you can say no one can come in until Saturday and then they leave on Monday morning. So you can.
You will have a check in and check out date is essentially what you said.
Absolutely. Yeah. Wilson and I are always there. We check everyone in, make sure everything's in good. So, yeah.
Just like any typical campground.
Yeah.
Check in, no check ins before whatever it is.
Right.
And no checkout is by.
Yep. Mm hmm.
Keep you within the sixty hours.
You, uh, you specify it in your listing that you can't come in until this time. You must be off by this time and you can't, you know, be out there setting off fireworks at any time. Like you set all the parameters and rules, just like a New York State campground.
Yep.
And, uh, last year we had, um, someone from the health department come out and give me the whole brochure and booklet. And so I kind of follow that to the T of, of like, even if we were over sixty hours, what they would, what their expectations would be. Like we want to make sure we're staying in that, but we, we want to stay within the sixty hours because we don't want to get into the whole sewage water and, and we bring in portageons and, um, the health department specifies how many portageons for how many campsites and we've, we will follow all of that.
Yep. Are you planning any transfers between Borderland and the campsite?
Um, there is Uber and Lyft. And last year I, I will be very honest with you. We did transfer some people there in the morning at eleven and twelve, and then we'd pick them up again at ten when it was over. Um, but that was pretty limited.
As I said, Uber and Lyft is fairly limited on that weekend. They do come in, but.
They do come in for that weekend. So, um, from what we've experienced, some people like have their designated driver. Um, I always make sure they have my phone number if they get in any kind of problem anywhere that they can call us and, and we are like I said, on the property and available for whatever they need. So. Is that a?
Well, it's, it's a consideration, right? I mean, I know the official Borderland, um, site. We do require a bus for them.
Yeah.
And, uh, so something we'll have to talk about with the chief and think about it, um, because we don't want a safety situation. I mean, Borderland is an open alcohol event. And I mean, you know, it's, it's a fun time, but it is what it is.
Yeah.
So it is a potential. I mean, so the, the way this process will work, right, is we have to have a, we'll have a public hearing. We'll open it up to questions and then we'll also have an opportunity to talk it out to make sure that we're doing everything correctly. That'll also, that will include the police as well. So.
Interestingly enough, my husband is an Uber driver.
Yeah.
So we, we can cover that if need be. Um.
So they order your Uber and your husband just goes.
I'm there. Yeah.
We have a vertical integration of our academic experience.
Yeah. Which actually, you know, within the conversation, that is, um, that's a plus. You know, people, like you said, they have beer, they have been a drink all day. So it's good for them to know that there is someone available to, um.
And the fact that you're giving out your phone number and picking people up and
Yeah.
sort of playing mama hat a little bit is quite a, quite a bonus to a campground situation.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, you know, we, we forego the festivities of Borderland and take care of what needs to be taken care of on our.
Or going.
Yeah, right. Yeah.
Anything else?
I'm good.
Thank you, Karen.
Thanks. Didn't know I was doing that, but thank you.
And next we have the, uh, application for a single O D A lot on Jewett Home and Grove. Is there anyone here from that piece of property? I guess not.
And we're going to be setting a public hearing on that, right?
Setting the public.
Yeah. Cause I don't, I don't understand that one yet, but I'll learn it before our hearing meeting. So.
And next we have a presentation by Kyle Patronic and Erica Hanley from Drescham Malecki, our town accounting firm. Uh, they have performed an audit for twenty twenty three. And, uh,
Um, my name is.
I'll turn it over to you.
Oh, thanks. My name is Erica Handley. With me, um, I have Kyle Patronic. Kyle really oversaw much of the day to day. So he's here. If there's any very specific questions, he can answer those certainly. I'll take you through, um, our audit procedures and the results of our audit for the December thirty first, twenty twenty three year end. Our contact information is on the last slide. If you have any questions, let me know. I know I'll be throwing a lot of different numbers and percentages at you. So feel free to contact us at any point after this or at any point during the year. We're happy to help. Moving through the presentation in front of you, the first slide presents what the products of our audit are. So what the actual deliverables will be once we conclude our audit. The basic financial statements are in draft form at this point. Um, however, we do anticipate moving forward with an unmodified opinion on those financial statements. That is also uh, can be referred to as a clean opinion. That's the best that you can do from an audit perspective. We also issue, um, submit the financial statements to the Government Finance Officers Association every year on your behalf, and the town has always received the award of, um, of the certification for that. So that will occur again this year. We also issue departmental reports. So we go into the tax receiver, town clerk, justices and the recreation department and perform certain procedures over those um, departments and will issue a report with that information. We do a compilation of what's referred to as the annual financial report. That is a state requirement that has already been submitted to the state. We will also issue what's referred to as a management letter. This is a public document that includes any certain best practices, any recommendations that we have. We have discussed those with management at this point. There is nothing significant. There are no reportable findings within the financial statements. So no material weaknesses, no significant efficiencies, no compliance. So really a clean bill of health as far as internal controls go for the town. And then lastly, we issue what is referred to as an auditor communication letter. This is a series of communications that is pretty standard year to year that we are required to have with this group. It goes over what our responsibilities are as your auditors, outlines certain accounting policies for your information. There were no changes in accounting policies year over year. There was that one new Gatsby updated, um, for this year, which you addressed through the policy that you, um, just discussed before. Your financial statements also include certain estimates. That includes your state pension liability. That comes directly from the state. There is a liability for retiree health insurance. You hire an actuary to perform that calculation for you and we take a look at them through the audit process. And then probably just again, the most important thing that's included in the auditor communication letter is that we are independent. Everyone that worked on the audit, everyone in our firm is independent of the town. So you have that assurance of a third party verification um, over your financial statements. And then moving on to the next few slides, I'll get into some of the financial statement updates. For each of these funds that I'm going to go through, there'll be two slides. One is a graph of the revenues expenditures over the past five years and that a related graph of five years of fund balances. So slide three, the first fund that we'll take a look at is the Water District's Fund. The blue line represents revenues and transfers in over the five year period versus the red line, which is expenditures and transfers out. For the Water District Fund, there was a slight increase in revenues this year. That was due to the budgeted increase in property taxes in that fund. Expenditures remained, um, just about exactly flat. Um, and this resulted in a slight decrease, however, of fund balance in this fund. The next slide, slide four shows the breakdown of what that fund balance is. So overall fund balance in the Water District's Fund amounted to one million, four hundred and forty thousand dollars at December thirty first, twenty twenty three. Of that fund balance, the red section represents certain restricted fund balance. So fund balance that you can't touch. It's reserved. It's restricted for other purposes, whereas that blue section represents your assigned or available fund balance in the water fund. Moving on to the next slide, which is moving on to the Highway Part Town Fund. Again, that same five year graph, the blue line revenues and transfers in, you can see a little bit of an increase there. Those are really related to some of the, um, the revenues that are not necessarily within your control. So the non-property tax, the sales tax, that was a big increase. About a hundred and fifty six thousand dollar increase over the prior year. And then there's also some FEMA, um, revenue that came in to, to help with that. Expenditure is just a slight increase year to year. Some equipment purchases, but those are offset by prior year expenses related to snowstorms. So pretty level overall on the expenditure side of things. There was an increase, um, and you can see on page six, an increase in overall fund balance in the Highway Part Town Fund, bringing ending fund balance to one million, four hundred and seventy thousand dollars. Again, that blue section represents what your available fund balance in the highway fund is. So that increased year over year. We really recommend taking a look at that and using that fund balance for like one-time purchases, especially because the revenues are tied to sort of non-necessarily sustaining revenues. You don't know where the sales tax will go. So really not relying too much on that revenue for operational purposes. Slide seven is your general part town fund. Not much movement here as far as year to year comparables. However, again, in this fund that has the benefit of the sales tax revenue coming in. So overall fund balance this year in your general part town fund amounted to an increase of three hundred and five thousand dollars. The next slide, again, the breakdown of the fund balances, ending fund balance in general part town fund. Um, coming to two million, six hundred and sixty nine thousand dollars. This fund has that, um, sort of beige section in it's one, about one point seven million dollars. That is funds that are considered to be earmarked or assigned that you will, uh, that you have committed to paying the village for police services. So whilst in your fund balance now, it will be paid out. And that's consistent with prior years, leaving that blue section, nine hundred and forty eight thousand dollars to be your available or what's, um, just at your disposal for use in that fund. And then lastly, moving on to the general fund, revenues in this fund decreased about a hundred and sixty four thousand dollars compared to the prior year. A big decrease in that fund was relating to the mortgage tax. So the town had some pretty favorable years relating to mortgage tax, seeing a decrease, uh, year over year of about three hundred and eight thousand dollar decrease in mortgage tax. Fortunately, some, um, benefits in that fund, interest earnings increased about a hundred and sixteen thousand dollars. So a good year on interest earnings was able to offset that slightly and a slight increase in, um, ARPA as well. So you're using your, uh, American Rescue Funds within there as well. On the expenditure side of things, um, just pretty much a general operations, an overall decrease of about a hundred and ninety seven thousand dollars. There were some transfers in the prior years to capital projects funds. That's where a larger amount of the expenditures were going and that decreased for this year. All that to say, general fund, fund balance increased by about four hundred and eighty five thousand dollars. So looking at the next slide, your overall fund balance at year end in the general fund, just coming under five million dollars. The blue section at the bottom is your unassigned fund balance in the general fund, your available fund balance. And that represents just about fifty three percent of your annual operations. The blue, the mint color section in there is assigned or committed fund balance. Those are funds that are earmarked for specific purposes. So there's some capital improvement earmarking in there. Um, that's also where your, the amount that you use to, um, in the next year's budget thing is included in that section. And then the section at the top are your more restricted fund balance, legally restricted fund balance. So overall, really, um, a really good year for the town financially. And you can see those increases in fund balance just about across the board. Uh, I've had several of these meetings over the past week with different towns throughout the town, throughout the county and the state. And it is the same that these sales tax coming in favorably has benefited just, you know, cautionary, like I said, that if those don't sustain, you know, trying to make sure that you're not using, you're depending on those too much for operations, just in case they don't sustain. Thank you to everyone that we worked with. We come into contact with a lot of people. We ask a lot of questions throughout our audit. So we appreciate all of the help that we receive, full cooperation of everyone that we came in contact with. Um, again, our contact information is here. If you have any questions now, or if you think of on it a little bit and have any, let us know.
Thank you. Anybody have any comments here?
Yeah, I do. So we're, I mean, I know we talk about this kind of every year, but we're at fifty two percent now for our general fund.
Yes.
Um, I, I know there's no recommended number for that, right? But we don't want to get into a situation where we're doing too well and we're taxing now for services that are things that are going to be provided in the future. Is there a recommended percentage level of this and the other funds for us to have? I mean, we are going to be more conservative. I can tell you that in the town quarter than, than a lot of other towns. We like to have that. We feel good about it. Are we in any danger of getting that fund to be too, um, good?
Sure. There's no formal. I don't think anyone will ever tell you the right amount. There have been recommendations in the past from the Government Finance Officers Association where they say you should have at least sixteen point six percent. So that's, uh, two and a half months. That would get you to tax collections. Um, that is their recommendation. Many people don't follow that. They find that they're more comfortable at a higher level. I think as long as you have considered a plan for that fund balance, or you know why you want to have it at the level that you have it at. So if the state were to come in and ask about it, you would be prepared to say what your comfortability level is and why you feel it is at that level. So unfortunately there's no magic number, no magic percent. It's kind of just an effort amongst the board to be sure that it's where you're comfortable and that there's a plan for it.
I think compare us with other towns in Erie County, for example, are we in the high end or?
Um, I I could get back to you on that. We have off, we have in the past provided different comparables. So I could reach out, I will reach out to Kathleen and have her reach out to all of you and see if there's certain towns that you want to have those comparables against. And I could let you know those. I don't want to say off the top of my head necessarily without having the information right in front of me.
I just want to say, uh, number one, thank you, Erica, for this, and thank you Kathleen, if you're watching, you said you're going to be watching. But I'll, this is my 11th year on the board. And I can say that it wasn't always like this. There were some hard decisions under Jolene Jeffy, Supervisor Jolene Jeffy. And Jim certainly carried that same thought process through and, you know, it's, it's just very comforting to have a nice fund balance, a nice little buffer there. And budget season's right around the corner. And we will do our best to continue doing what's right for the town of Aurora.
Definitely. It's nice to come in and deliver good news. So it makes it easy for us to.
Yes, we should probably shout out to the, the tan part in the general fund part town has the police service. That's the Sufreese, the Sufreese color, right?
Yep. And the, and the way that that comes due is, is it always yeah, no, there's a, there's a time of year when we're actually a year and a half behind.
And we should say that, I should say that the, in the previous board did a great job of recognizing that and getting it to this point where we are now caught up on that and happy with it right here. So.
Agreed.
Thank you very much.
Right. Does anybody else have anything they want to add to the work session? Now we'll get into the regular meeting. Elizabeth, would you please let me know if there's anyone online who wants to? So the first item in the public hearings is the public hearing for the property at 298 Elka Road. This is the event center. I'll open this public hearing at 7:22. This is for Neil Hopkins at 298 Elka Road. If anyone would like to address the board, please step up to the mic, give us your name and address and let us know your thoughts. Anyone?
Kind of want to make him go through his spiel again, but we won't do that.
Seeing no one, I'll close this public hearing at 7:23. Next is another request by Neil Hopkins. I'll open this public hearing also at 7:23. Anyone like to wish to address the board? Please step up to the mic, give us your name and address. This is in regards to a campground at 298, no, 928, Elka Road, 290, oh yeah, Elka Road. Anyone would like to address the board? Seeing no one, we'll close this public hearing at 7:24. Lucky on that one. Next is a public hearing regarding the property of 420 Oleen Road. Would anyone like to address the board? Please step up to the mic, give us your name and address. This is in regards to a special use permit for Ron Barsh at 420 Oleen Road. Seeing no one, I'll close that public hearing at 7:25. Next is a public hearing on a local law amendment to our town code, chapter 116. If anyone would like to address the board, please step up to the mic, give us your name and address. And I'll open that public hearing at 7:26. Seeing no one, I'll also close that public hearing at 7:26. Next is a public hearing regarding the special use permit application submitted by Verizon for the installation of a telecommunications tower at 4399 Transit Road on the property owned by Murray Brothers. Before we begin, I would like to, just give me one second. I'd like to give you a brief overview of the law as it pertains to town board approvals on telecommunications towers. There may be some of you who do not want the tower to go up no matter what. We as a municipality don't have the right to block a tower from being built if the wireless carrier shows there is a gap in service. And if there is no existing tower available in that service area. In that same need area, they can co-locate their antenna and build a tower if they are able to find a landowner who is willing to use their land and if they follow the rules of our code. Our town code is written in compliance with the Federal Communications Act of 1996. And our code recognizes that we as a local municipality may only make decisions regarding the placement, construction and modification of cellular service towers. If Verizon is able to meet all of the requirements set forth in our town code, we have little or no basis for denying their application to place a monopole at 4399 Transit Road. With that, I'll open this public hearing at 7:27. And with a brief update from our representatives from Horizon, Verizon.
Good evening, everybody. Anthony Sirianni from Seaman Norris LLP. I'm also here with Brett Morgan, our site acquisition agent, and Patrick Makubire from Verizon Wireless, who's our engineer on the project. As you guys know, I've been here many times. We've talked about what, you know, what we're proposing to do on Transit Road in some in substance is to construct a monopole telecommunications tower, a cell tower out on the Murray Brothers Nursery property on the southeast side of the property, all within all the required setbacks. I do want to just give you a couple minor updates, particularly with regards to our one request for a waiver. We're going to pull that request and we will, you know, we'll install the site with the 100 by 100 fence. So that would likely put us in complete compliance with the provisions of the town code. We, we, you know, we submitted that request just to limit the disturbance. But knowing that these are what you're requesting of us, what the town requires of us, we're fine with pulling that waiver. Beyond that, you know, I, I don't want to take too much of your time. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them for you. Otherwise, I'll, you know, I'll step away.
I have no questions myself.
Your original application had some variances to our code, but you brought them into line. Is that correct?
That's, that's correct. Yes. So the actual site was moved to make all required setbacks fit pursuant to the code. The closest residence is beyond the 500 foot mark. So the code requires 500 feet of separation between the cell tower and the nearest residence. We're at about 560.
And just to reiterate, I know we already discussed this, but the issue of the Erie County Water Authority Tower has been thoroughly examined. Can you explain why this is not a suitable location?
Certainly. So there are a number of reasons. The, the primary reason from our side is that the water tower itself does not meet the height requirements for us to provide our, our actual service. So we cannot, my understanding of this is that the cell service needs a certain amount of space between the ground and the installation of the antenna, so to speak. And we need more height than what's available by the water tower.
Okay, I'm glad you brought that up, Joe. Was, I think I had in my notes that there was some documentation of that study that you were going to provide to the town. Was that provided?
Yes, it was. I believe we provided a supplemental response with regards to the site selection and the radio frequency analysis. We provided both of those to you at the planning board stage. So I believe that those are current as of today. Okay, those are still current.
To the planning board.
We provided those to the planning board. I believe they've been referred to you as well.
Anything else? Nothing else? I'll also, thank you. I'll open this up to the public. Please step up to the mic, give us your name, address, and please address the board. Who wants to go first?
I'm Lori Felton Schwing and I live at 4485 Transit Road. I appreciate the opportunity to voice my concerns about a proposed 135 foot cell tower to be located at 4399 Transit Road, Town of Aurora. I am a neighbor at 4485 Transit Road, Town of Aurora, and I have highlighted a few reasons why this project should not be allowed. I am counting on you as a publicly elected town board member to do your due diligence on the impacts this proposed project has on our town. As per their application submitted February 12th, 2024, Verizon Wireless and Vertical Bridge responded to the Town of Aurora's requirements. As such, the cell tower will promote health, safety and general welfare of the community, also that it will be in harmony with the appropriate and orderly development of the district in which it will be located. I am voicing my opposition to this project as this could not be further from the truth. This proposed 135 foot cell tower will not only create visual pollution as it will be the tallest structure in the area. It also does not fit in with the aesthetics and character of this residential area. Another concern is that this proposed site is in very close proximity to 39.47 acres of federally protected wetlands per US.GS.gov. Of special concern is the impact this tower will have on the unique wildlife and critical habitats for animals and migratory birds, specifically concerning the cerulean warbler. According to a case study found on US.GS.gov, the cerulean warbler is present in the wetlands location. Also according to DEC.NY.gov, the cerulean warbler is deemed of special concern, meaning any species for which a welfare concern or risk of endangerment has been documented in New York State. As per the US Fish and Wildlife Service, FWS.gov, cell towers should not be sighted in or near wetlands, and if it is deemed are only 1.5 miles down the road. The reason people move to our town, the reason I did is because of the beautiful aesthetics of our town. Now the aesthetics will be cell phone towers. Drive by the area and see the cell tower will be the first thing you see entering our town right out in the open. If Verizon or Vertical Bridge has their way, another tower will litter the landscape because this, because they state that is needed. They say they are a public entity and that they have protection in New York State. That may be true, but there are other locations for the cell tower that should be explored first and ultimately built at those sites, which are more preferable than dropping a tower in a residential neighborhood. New York State would agree. Municipally owned properties like water towers are better options. Plus the municipality Plus, the municipalities would benefit off the revenue from the lease. This is a better fit for a tower, much better than a neighborhood location. There is a water tower in Elma on Seneca Street that would be a good fit. Any number of places on Southwestern, which is primary commercial, would be a good fit. There's also a golf course at the corner of Transit and Southwestern that may like additional revenue from a lease. All better locations which are appropriate for cell towers, maybe Verizon Vertical Bridge will need to pay more in rent, but those locations are much more suitable than a neighborhood with family homes like it is being proposed. Another great location would be the town Highway Department Garage. In the past, Sprint and or Nextel were interested in this location. It is a good location on a municipally owned property in a commercial area of the town. Again, not in a residential neighborhood, no matter what the zoning maps say. This is a residential neighborhood. Families live surrounding the nursery. No other commercial developments are nearby. Just because they may have some protection from the state, there is no mandate that states this tower needs to be in our town. There are two other bordering towns that will benefit from the proposed tower. Our citizens already have coverage provided from the existing tower one point five miles away on Davis Road. Let the other towns build a tower to benefit the citizens. Please take a drive over to our area. You will see family residents all around the proposed site. You will see the beautiful landscape around the proposed site. Do not diminish our property values, our neighborhood, and our environment when there are clearly better locations for this cell tower. This is where you, as a public elected Town of Aurora Board Member, can make the right choice for our town. Verizon reps can provide whatever data and fancy graphs in their applications to support their need for a cell tower in their proposed location. It is their job, and they do that for a living in town after town and just move on to the next town. There is no guarantee that this proposed location will provide better cell phone service. Telecom providers can't guarantee their work as there are so many factors involved in cell phone call quality and reasons why calls are dropped. Telecom providers know a landline is the most dependable service, but that doesn't sell their products. There are other less intrusive options available to use as a town. Please don't destroy this picturesque landscape. It should stay like the beautiful photos on your town website and etched into your wood artwork in your community room. I ask you to please vote no to this project. Something needs to be done to stop this proposed project that clearly lacks transparency and accuracy. I feel there is a compromise.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anyone else would like to address the board? I would ask that you keep your comments to three minutes, please.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak. My name is Dawn Pierce. I live on Transit Road, about six houses from Murray Brothers. Um, I agree with what the girl ahead of me had said. I also would like to contribute also some health aspects. Um, I have been twenty-four years in the medical holistic health field. Um, and also several members of my family also own property on Transit as well, so I'm also speaking for them. Um, with the health aspect of five G, we ask that more information be brought forth to the health ramifications of five G. We're living in a new era in time. Once upon a time, power lines, we were told were perfectly fine to live under. We now know that that is not true. So there is a lot of research that has been being done, not only in our country, but in many other countries on the health issues with five G. Um, anybody who has heart issues also can be affected by five G living within five hundred um, meters of the cell tower. Anybody who has pacemakers, um, the heart itself is an electromagnetic field. That's why pacemakers do work. We do have a few people that are living very close, less than probably two hundred uh, meters from where the tower will be that has pacemakers and also recovering from new uh, pacemaker being implemented. Um, there's uh, research on the nervous system itself. The human nervous system is not fully developed until eighteen months of age. So there's a lot of research on people who have autism, young children, babies can also be affected by five G. Cancer is another huge research study being done in many other countries on the close proximity of these towers uh, next to each other. Um, there is strong data that shows within five years or less of living less than five hundred meters to a tower that uh, cancer is a very high rate and also recurrent rate for anybody who has been in remission. There's research on autoimmune issues um, that ties in with the uh, nervous system as well. Um, the, as far as environment, uh, bees are greatly affected by the electromagnetic fields. Um, the area that they're putting the tower in is is zoned agricultural. However, it is becoming highly residential. We have two brand new uh, homes in the process of being built by Forbes Caprato that literally will be diagonal from the tower. Um, the, there's, we have questions as a community on the boundaries, the ordinance zonings, which somebody had spoke about earlier. Um, we do not consent as a community to anything less than what is already approved by the town. Um, so we ask that no exceptions be made for any less uh, footage than what you guys have already agreed to. Um, for Verizon. Um, we do have great cell uh, coverage. We have great internet coverage. Nobody has any issues um, with the services that are already available, so we don't see where there will be any gains from adding a tower. Um, I realize you guys cannot make decisions based on aesthetics. Um, but there is a lot of health issues which will impact people greatly. If they were to put more um, cell companies onto those towers and adding that amplifies it, which now amplifies all of the potential health issues. Um, we have a petition circulating around the neighborhood. Everybody does seem to be pretty much in alignment as far as the greatest concerns are health issues and property values. Um, and we're basically asking for more attorneys to be put into place and a pause so that we have the time to research all of this uh, before the towers do go in. Um, and I think that's pretty much it. I do have, you know, a lot of information and stuff, but I won't take up your time. That's the, the basic overview of our deepest concerns is the human health issue aspect of it.
Okay. Thank you very much for your comments.
Thank you guys very much for your time.
Anyone else like to address the board? And I will also ask if you would try to keep your comments to three minutes, please?
Hi, my name's Kurt Harlock. I live at one, five, three, one Quaker Road, along with my fiancee Kelly Brownell. Uh, we purchased the property in May of twenty twenty-two. Um, and we have several concerns about um, the potential proposal for the uh, telecommunications tower going in. Um, the first being a due diligence concern. Um, in the materials provided by Verizon Wireless, initially they said that they reached out to the Erie County Water Authority. That was, you know, brought up as a concern. Erie County Water Authority then, you know, came back and said, we don't have documentation of this. I know there's been conversations since. Um, but that's just one instance. There's another instance in their documentation where um, when sending out letters, they addressed uh, their letter to George Cool, who was never a resident of East Aurora. George Cole was the former owner of our property. Unfortunately, George passed away over a year ago. Um, and tax records would have shown for the past two years that the property would have been in our name, which leads me to believe there's due diligence concerns across the wider analysis done by Verizon and um, you know, really making sure that they've reached out appropriately to the affected parties. Um, another concern of mine uh, is that when we bought this property in May of twenty twenty-two, um, our intent was, you know, to grow a family here or to build a family here uh, and live here for the rest of our lives. Um, we are actually planning to build a house on the property that is adjacent to Murray Brothers. And a question for you, is the five hundred foot setback, um, would that affect building a new house down the road? Because that's ideally where we've mapped out, you know, where our house would go on the property. Um, and now this tower's coming in and potentially impacting that. And we'll be living in the shadow of that tower, you know, for the rest of our lives on the property. Um, in addition to that, I do have some concerns on property values in the uh, surrounding area. Um, so in a study in the Journal of Real Estate Finance and Economics, uh, there was a study published that said that houses within point seven two kilometers of the cell tower um, saw a negative impact to their property value of two point six or two point four six percent on average. Um, and within the same range where the tower was visible, that was nine point seven eight. There are seventy-two properties within that point seven two kilometers of the proposed site. A balloon test has been done at four of those properties in total. So even using the more conservative figure, we know there's more properties that are within the line of sight. Um, but the total loss in property value, again, understating this, would be eight hundred and sixty-nine thousand, two hundred and forty-one dollars to the surrounding property owners based on fair market value that's available in the most recent tax records. Um, I would urge you to consider the residents that are affected nearby. Um, and really our wishes for this proposal, at least uh, for Verizon to prove their due diligence, look for alternative locations within the range um, that's been proposed, um, and to consider the constituents of the town here. Thanks for your time.
Thank you for your comments. Anyone else like to address the board?
My name is Douglas Ford. I live at fifteen, fifteen Quaker Road. Uh, I got notes all over here, so if I get a little jumbled up after listening to everybody. They covered a lot of this, but the original application uh, I went over again today. And the only thing that's changed off that original application was that Verizon did contact the water authority uh, and asked for the specs on the property where the water tank is. Uh, no negotiations or anything like that. They just asked for the specs from what I'm told. Um, but all the other people that they contacted on there said they did contact, send letters out to. Um, I still haven't contacted those people. Uh, Boba Lee's Golf Course. As far as I know, he hasn't been contacted. Uh, there's some property there that could be available. But I really think that there's other places for this thing to go. Um, as was said earlier, uh, it's more of a residential neighborhood more than, I know it's zoned agriculture, but they're building houses in all four directions from that intersection and, and a short distance away, all within sight of this tower. Um, and I have to uh, go back with Kurt and Kelly there. These two kids bought property two years ago with the intention of building a house directly over the fence from this tower. And as he said, he'll be within the the, the footage that's of this tower. That tower will sit right there looking at his house. I don't think that's quite fair to do to them after they put their money into buying property and um, plan on making a family there. Uh, I think that's a, a real important thing for us to look at. Um, and I guess, uh, you know, Murray's own a lot more property. Probably a quarter mile down the road. I know the elevation is lower, but they could put it back in the woods. Build a higher tower if you need to, so it sticks up out of the trees. Um, I don't think it's gonna bother anybody back there, but um, they have a pond back in the woods and I'm sure that there's access to it. Uh, I know that Murray Brothers is a is a probably a convenient place for this to go. It's the most feasible place for Verizon to go to. They don't have to build a driveway back into the but um, I really think that this tower doesn't need to be in the middle of a residential area like this. Um, Murray's Murray's manager over at the nursery said that she would put Christmas lights on us to make all the residents happy, but I don't think that's gonna cut any ice with us. Um, but as far as what you had earlier to say, Chuck, about what the rules are there and what you guys can do. So tell them no. What are they gonna do? Come after you? Um, send a lawyer after you? I don't know. We don't want it there. We, we have our homes and, and our property values are what they are. I mean, I'm retired. I can't afford to lose uh, twenty percent of my home value. I bank on that home being there for my future. So um, all we're asking is to take a good look at it and, and support us. Please.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Thank you for your comments. Anyone else? I will ask you to keep your comments to three minutes, please.
Do that. Starlock and I live at fifteen, nineteen Quaker Road with my wife Sarah. And uh, we've been a resident of the Town of Aurora for thirty years. Um, we bought the property we're currently on from the Colaruso family fourteen years ago and built our house because it was such an aesthetically pleasing area. It was just everything we had always wanted uh, the property to be. Uh, prior to that, we lived on Idlewood. Um, and uh, my biggest concern with this is, is really in the problem. I mean, beyond aesthetics, beyond how the, how the development of the corridor between Orchard Park and East Aurora being a residential development. Is the property values. Um, there are many, many, many articles not from just this area, but from all over the United States, all over other countries about uh, decreased property values with the construction of cell towers, up to twenty percent. There's a lot of residents in that area uh, that have been longer than I have and maybe counting on the value of their homes for their retirement. Um, and, and no one can afford to take a twenty percent hit on the property values. Um, and the problem is that once the tower is built, it's built, it's done. So it, it we can't, it won't be taken down um, after it's constructed, so um, this, this is a huge concern. Um, and, and it, it affects everybody on Idlewood. It affects people on Transit Road. It affects people um, in the Town of Orchard Park, probably aren't uh, here tonight, that uh, have built houses along right across from Murray Brothers Nursery. Um, there's a new house right on the end of our driveway that's going in, and I would almost guarantee you that they didn't know it cell tower was gonna be built um, when they bought the property and, and hired a contractor to build them a home. It's just it's, it's just a not a good choice. It's not a good decision for this area. It's not a good decision for that corridor. Um, and it just affects too many people in a negative way. So that's what I have to say.
Okay. Thank you for your comments. Anyone else?
Good evening.
Hi.
I didn't prepare anything to speak tonight, but I would have been at the last meeting, but I was in the hospital with heart issues.
Could I have your name and address?
Oh, sorry. Dominic Caricetti. I'm at fifteen oh nine Quaker Road. I live with my wife, Mary Ann Colaruso. And as Russ Harlock mentioned, that was the Colaruso property for a long time. Anyway, uh, I had to have a pacemaker installed in my heart. And because of that, I'm really concerned about the location of the tower. Not just uh, the change in uh, home values that are going to occur. I'm concerned for my own health. Uh, I did receive a manual on this pacemaker that I have. And uh, one of the items in there, don't be located near a cell tower. So I'm in a quandary. Either something's gotta shake out here. Uh, I don't wanna move. I love my house. Love where, where located. Um, I would just like to see something done that's practical for the area. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to address the board? I will ask you to keep your comments to three minutes, please?
Susan Langendorf, thirteen, sixty-nine Quaker Road.
Susan Langendorf at thirteen sixty-nine Quaker Road. So Verizon Wireless has submitted an application for a special use permit for a hundred and thirty-five foot wireless telecommunications tower at forty-three ninety-nine Transit Road. So tonight we're addressing our concern as taxpayers of the town of Aurora. And according to section one sixteen dash forty-four, the standards of the town of Aurora, the New York codes, the town board may issue a special permit only upon finding that each and all of the following conditions are met. And I know you guys know what they are, um, but A, uh, uses, uses permitted will be in general harmony with and promote the general purposes and intent of the most recent comprehensive plan of the town, the most recent open space plan and the zoning ordinance. Now you know that the, uh, comprehensive plan is really old and it doesn't address cell phone towers at all because there was no such thing back in two thousand and four. In fact, I, I did a quick little, um, search in the comprehensive plan for anything that said town of Aurora. And most of it was just pretty much preserving the community character. Um, properly managing future growth, just keeping the rural character, proper planning, development, just keeping it how it is right now without a big cell phone tower. And also, um, I feel like the town of Aurora should be in control of where these utility structures are located and what they look like. Instead of letting an outside company piecemeal them every three to five or one to five miles throughout our agricultural, rural, residential beautiful town. B, impact. So that's my first where they're not, um, following the, uh, conditions for the special use permit. And B, impact on the district, the location and size of the use, nature, intensity of the operations. And it goes on, and I'm just saying the residents on this block have legitimate concerns regarding the, the location and size of the proposed construction of a one hundred and thirty-five foot cell tower located on This is a, an rural residential neighborhood of mostly very upscale homes, mostly. Um, C, adjacent properties, the location, nature and height of buildings, walls, fences, and the nature and extent of the landscaping of the site. So, shall be of, so, so, shall be such that the usual will not hinder or discourage the appropriate development and use of adjacent land and buildings. So again, the presence of a hundred and thirty-five foot cell tower in the midst of an agricultural area surrounded by upscale homes could indeed discourage appropriate development. Nobody's gonna want to. Sometimes I go on Realtor dot com and I look for houses to go to and I see a cute house. There was one in Hamburg. And you open it up and you look at the pictures and there was a picture of this beautiful house and I'm like, why is it so cheap? In the backyard was a big ugly cell phone tower, one of the five G cell phone towers. And it's like, there was no way in the world I would ever not only move to Hamburg, but I would not buy that little cute little house for such a good deal. Um, number C, adjacent prop- oh, I did that one. D, impacts on neighboring properties. I, I, it definitely will impact all of us. I mean, it's gonna, uh, it, it helps the, our, our health, um, property values. I just, I don't wanna look out my kitchen window and look at a big ugly cell phone tower. I just, I've lived there for twenty-five years and I've broke my back just trying to make it a nice place. And now all of a sudden I have to look at this thing. It's just not natural, ugly. And I, it, here again, the impact, I copied it word for word. E, impact on surrounding properties, the nature and duration of the operations which are involved in connection with the proposed use will be in harmony with nearby uses and will not alter the essential character of the neighborhood or be detrimental to the residents thereof. The proposed special use provides sufficient landscaping or other forms of buffering to protect surrounding land uses. The visual impact of the cell phone, the cell tower will drastically alter the defining essential character of the neighborhood. We bought our homes here because of the characteristic, characteristics which define this rural residential and agricultural neighborhood. It's gonna be forever altered if you put that thing in there and it will never go away. I'm almost done. And then I F G H I J K, you know, there's, those are it's traffic parking services. It doesn't affect that at all. Um, so out of the eleven standards, there's at least four of them that cannot be met. So we realize five G is coming to the area. However, taxpayers, maybe we request a pause for five G cell phone tower installations in the town until our concerns are adequately addressed. And maybe we're looking for a win-win solution. And um, I was curious, I was doing a little research on the internet today about smart pole, smart pole technologies or five G concealment towers. And I don't know if that's something that Verizon does, or if it's something they just do in big cities, but it was like a, um, it just seemed like a better option. It wasn't so obtrusive. So that's all I have to say. Um, and also I just wanna say Verizon, we don't even have Verizon. I don't know if the five G, five G Verizon tower gives you internet too. I'm not sure if it's just for your cell phones when you're driving or whatever. But we don't even, it's not even an option. We don't have Verizon. It's, they don't let us have Verizon, just Spectrum. Or Dish or whatever. So, thank you very much.
Okay. Thank you. Anyone else? And I would just ask to say just something, something new.
No, you asked and it can't the residents' opinion.
Yes.
If we have similar opinions, there might be reason for that.
But we keep it to three minutes, please?
I will try to keep it to three minutes. My name's David Schwan. I live at four four eight five Transit Road, Town of Aurora. I am voicing my opinion about the proposed, uh, communications tower to be located four three nine nine Transit Road. I am saying that this town just needs to weigh the public need for a communications tower at that specific location versus surrounding neighborhood and town concerns. For the town residents, we have concerns. Some are very serious concerns. This project is being placed into an area that has a residential feel. Again, you wanted something new, but this is our, we live here. This is how we feel about this neighborhood. It's a residential agricultural neighborhood. It's not commercial. Uh, it's no municipalities around here. It's a beautiful, uh, landscape. This area has changed over time from agricultural to residential and more residential properties are being built in this immediate area. There's the new residence being built on a lot adjacent to Murray Brothers on twenty-eight, and there's four brand new uh, residential lots being built on Transit Road just south of Murray Brothers. This area will likely continue to grow into this manner benefiting our town and our tax base. Erecting this communication towers in this location will have a negative impact on this type of growth negatively affecting the town tax base. People are moving to this area. We moved to this area because of the beautiful aesthetics of the town in this area. We live on a lot just under seven acres with the gorgeous view. And our communication tower, under thirty-five feet will negatively impact the resale value of the land and surrounding lands in this area. Again, negatively impacting the new housing market. They have been changing the neighborhood. There are other locations. I'm just talking about a compromise. I'm not saying they can't build a tower. I'm just saying there needs to be a compromise with, uh, the town weighing, uh, the need versus citizen concerns. Other areas would be better suited for this communications tower. I understand that communication towers have similar rights to utilities in your state. I'm just saying there's a better location to place this tower. A location may not be the most ideal for a telecom tower, but it still gets the job done. Versus a major negative impact on the citizens of the neighborhood when it comes to aesthetics, property values. Also including the growth, the future growth and negative impacts for the neighborhood in town. In their paperwork that they filed, they looked at Boba Link's golf course and had an interested landowner at Boba Link's. Their technical people said the location is okay, but not ideal. Well, uh, the current location isn't ideal for the surrounding neighbors. This is something that town needs to weigh. A location that is more beneficial to telecommunications versus more negative impact to surrounding landowners and neighborhoods. If another location would work and not impact the surrounding neighborhood as much, it just seems like a reasonable compromise. Boba Link's is, is a golf course and has a more wide open area, bigger lot size and more adjacent undeveloped land. It would have less impact on the neighborhood. It would also have less impact on the aesthetics and property values of the current neighborhood where this proposed tower is going to be placed. Other areas that seem to make more sense would be the Harvest Hill Golf Course on Transit Road. The town of Alma Water Town on Sankaku Street near Transit Road. In the past, the town highway department property, uh, has been inquired as, uh, location for a telecommunications uh, tower. Maybe a co-location on a fire hall, again. Uh, possibly Springbrook Fire Hall on Sankaku Street or our town fire department. Other municipal owned properties would also benefit the town by receiving rent income for the project. This would not add a new tower to the landscape, just co-locate one on an existing tower in the area. All these proposals seem like a better idea than erecting a communications tower in a nursery surrounded by residential family properties, which will negatively impact the current and future property values and aesthetics of those properties. These ideas might not be the most ideal location for a telecommunications company. But they would work and maybe they would just have to do a little bit more to make it work. Murray Brothers' location might be the easiest way for a telecom company to erect a tower by, by, but by no means is it the best or ideal location for the citizens surrounding that property. According to the town code, the most ideal locations are property, uh, with an existing structure suitable for a co-location. Municipal or government owned property, property located in a zoning district. And then the last one is property located in a residential zoning district. It seems like this pro- or this project has been going on for a couple of years. And the neighbors have only been realizing something was happening for probably the last six months. Which is kind of crappy as a neighbor. I wouldn't put a cell phone tower on my property because I know it would affect my neighbors. None of these people who talked today, who are property owners, would erect a cell phone tower on their property. Because we're neighbors, we understand sense of community. Murray Brothers said, okay, because they don't live there. They live further down the road in another section of town where they're not gonna have to worry about their property values. It doesn't seem very neighborly. If they would have reached out to the neighbors and said, hey, we're thinking about putting a cell phone tower here. What are you thinking? They would have learned that a nice young couple who bought property next to Murray Brothers is planning on building a house there. And now if they do build that house, there is going to be well within the five hundred foot rule. And it's going, they're the shadow of the tower is going to be on their, uh, forever home that they wanna build. It kinda seems not right. That is kinda going backwards here. I know the town has to weigh, um, property owners' rights versus others' rights. Just seems like this property, there's a compromise here and where it's going now is not the ideal location for the surrounding neighbors in this area. Please take a drive over to our area. You will see family residents all around the proposed site. You will see the beautiful landscape around the proposed site. Do not diminish our current and future property values. Our neighborhood and our environment when there are clearly better locations compromises for this communications tower. I would ask you not to approve this project as another site would be a better compromise for this tower. Thank you for your time. I might have been three minutes and thirty seconds.
You're good. You're good. Thank you. Thank you. Anyone else?
Hi.
Hi.
Um, my name is Kelly Ronell. I live at fifteen thirty-one Quaker Road. Um, my property got brought up a couple of times by people who came up here in support of us. I live directly next to where the cell phone tower is going up. My fiance and I bought our home in two thousand and twenty-two. Um, we bought it from a lovely couple who has since passed. When we bought our property, we wrote them a letter explaining why we wanted it. We wanted to preserve the farm, preserve the nature that was surrounding it. Since we moved in, my fiance has planted over four hundred trees on the property to preserve the nature and the wildlife that surrounds it. This would be detrimental to our property value, our life, our want and need to raise kids surrounded by nature. Um, I urge you to please consider this before you say yes. Um, the tower, to put it in perspective, will be over twelve stories high. There is nothing like that at all around where we live.
Chuck, you're not the screamers, geez.
Okay. Next. Can I have a motion to approve payment number twelve to Ford Albert in the amount of eleven thousand seven hundred and seventy dollars, ninety-four cents for professional services rendered from March thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-four through April twenty-sixth, two thousand and twenty-four for the Church Street bridge, bridge replacement project. Those will be dispersed from H seven, five one two O dot two one zero.
So moved.
Motion by Luke. Can I have a second?
Second.
Second by Joe. Comments or discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried. Next on the agenda is the Gatsby agreement. Can I have a motion to approve the revised Government Accounting Standards Board Agreement as requested?
So moved.
Motion by Joe. Can I have a second?
Second.
Second by Ray. Comments or discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried. Next on the agenda are a series of highway promotions. On the agenda. Can I have a motion to approve Justin Smith for the promotion of working crew chief at the pay rate of thirty-four dollars and sixty-four cents? Along with approving Jordan Snyder for promotion to motor equipment operator. At the pay rate of thirty-two dollars and eighty-five cents an hour. Along with approving Nick Engelfinger for promotion of, of, uh, motor equipment operator at the rate of thirty-two dollars and eighty-five cents an hour. And to assign highway truck driver Colin Voss, uh, the, the, uh, mechanic stipend at an hourly rate of twenty-seven dollars and thirty-two cents an hour.
So moved.
Motion by Joe. Can I have a second?
Second.
Second by Luke. Comments or discussion?
I just wanna opine that I think it's great that, uh, we offer this opportunity in the town, that you can do hard work and do a good job and move on up through the ranks. I think it's fantastic.
Great. Anything else? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed. Motion carried. Next is the, is the seasonal staff bonuses. Can I have a motion to approve the seasonal staff bonus, bonuses as presented, um, for our recreational seasonal staff?
So moved.
Motion by Ray. Can I have a second?
Second.
Second by Joe. Comments or discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried. Next is also a request from Chris. Can I have a motion to approve the seasonal and pool recreational staff, uh, as listed?
So moved.
Motion by Ray. Can I have a second?
Second.
Second by Joe. Comments or discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried. Next is also from Chris, a budget amendment. Can I have a motion to approve amending two lines? Can I have a motion to approve amending two lines in the budget to represent the increase in revenue? And to cover expenses, uh it there will be an increase in line A zero zero dash two zero five six dash zero 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 dash zero 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 and line A zero zero dash seven three one zero dash zero four zero zero dash zero zero one. Each line is in the amount of seven thousand one hundred and forty seven dollars.
So moved.
Motion by Joe. Can I have a second?
Second.
Second by Ray. Comments or discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carried. And a request from Liz DeViso. Can I have a motion to rehire Jonathan Meisenheimer uh residing at ninety six Sheer Avenue at a rate of pay at sixteen dollars an hour? And also Thomas Marletti residing at six six four West Falls Road. Kyle Rosinski residing at sixteen sixty Blakely Road. Their pay rate will be fifteen dollars an hour.
So moved.
Motion by Joe. Can I have a second?
Second.
Second by Luke. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Under Communications and Reports, I have the uh March and April twenty twenty four Recreation Reports. Then uh I have the Building Department, April twenty twenty four Reports, Senior Center Dog Control, Work Requisitions, Town Clerk Report, Town Clerk Tax Report, Town Clerk Water Report, Eastern Our Police Department Report and Supervisors Report, all of April twenty twenty four. Next is business from the board members. And we'll start with Councilman McCann.
I'll keep it brief. I attended the Planning Board uh meeting, and you tackled some weighty stuff with a lot of intricacies, and I commend you, Chairman Crowe, on your uh handling of the board and the questions, and there's a lot going on. You guys did a great job, and that's all I have.
Councilman Wyszansky?
I'll also keep it brief. Uh, congratulations. We were awarded the first ten thousand dollars under the Clean Energy Community Program. Um, we will be receiving an email at some point within the next probably week, at which point there will be a three month clock during which we need to decide what we're going to use that money for. So what the uh sort of the terms of that grant and what we can use it for, we can't use it for, that's all going to be in that email. Um, but that comes from a lot of years of hard work, the climate smart community, and uh really, it was a reset last year, and so we're going to be hitting these off quickly now because this is, each time we hit a priority action, we qualify with the points. We've already got the point. So once we have new new actions, the next grant will be fifty thousand dollars. So we got this first level by doing a um clean fleet inventory um to be able to benchmark how much our our vehicles are uh emitting greenhouse gases, and the next uh priority action will um be what we voted on today, the community solar campaign, since we have ten people. That is a priority action, and that qualifies us for the fifty, but the first ten was approved, and so we're getting that soon.
On the way.
Yep.
Thank you, Luke. Councilman Razin?
Also brief, uh we're finishing up on majors. The kiosk, I believe, is done. I haven't stopped by to take a look at it. Next order on the agenda is to get a couple quotes on the map that we have at kiosk. Uh, we'll be doing that over the next week or so. Uh, all the posts for the trail markers are up. Uh, I believe the trail marker um markings are up as well, and then I asked Dave to uh back in the woods. There's some metal debris, so he wrote a work order to get that out of there. You know, it's certainly a danger area. So that should be done shortly. So that's it.
Thank you, Ray. And I'll just mention that we had our first official um local planning committee meeting two weeks ago, and it was a good group of people. Uh, this is for the Western North Forward Grant. And we're also having a community open house, if you will, at the Waldorf School on uh the twentieth of May at six o'clock, and everyone is certainly invited to come. Next is Audience Two, an opportunity for anyone to discuss anything they'd like, and come on up, Ron.
Brought to me by Barry Court. Uh, a little bit perhaps out of order, but the gentleman from the community solar campaign left, so I'm just going to address it to him. Uh, certainly, it appeared to be a win-win for both residents and the town to approve this. Uh, my only question is uh the commitment to this and the endorsement, et cetera. Would that obligate uh the town to authorize a solar farm in the town? The fact that we got a lot of feedback on a cell tower, if that's part of it, uh that should certainly be a strong consideration in any deliberation done. Do you know if that's part of it?
But I can answer that. No, there is no obligation for that. It doesn't change the, any of the laws pertaining to to solar plants. We, there is a particular project that we are actually getting this from and is down by Binghamton. I'm sorry. So that's the the solar energy that we're coming in, but it doesn't change the um, it's not a sort of a, doesn't change any of those, our zoning or the state uh regulations on solar uh facilities.
Got a couple of questions next time he's here as a as a resident.
Now, you can, you can send those to me, and I can uh send them over to him.
Okay.
They are going to have an appointed representative for all this stuff, but uh happy to do that in the first one, and or alternatively, I can ask him if I can give his email out, and I'll just have you just talk to him directly, but yeah.
I'll do that. Thank you. Uh, second, uh, quick uh question, if you will, uh like to get a uh status on the uh Advisory Committee's uh short term rental code change recommendations. It's been several months since uh we had our last meeting, and I think we finalized at least the committee's recommendations go to the board, and uh I see that we've had, you know, several more since then, and I'd like to, if we're going to proceed, get that button down before we get many, many more
Sure.
requests for short term rentals.
I'll see what I can do about that, Ron.
Okay. Thank you.
You bet.
That might be on my desk.
So on your desk?
I believe it's on my desk. I apologize, Ron.
Okay.
I will
We'll get on it, Ron.
Review it in the hopes of getting it on and getting it back to the committee with my edits and the next, this week.
Thank you.
Is it too late to talk about the communications tower?
No, you can speak on it. You can speak on anything. Sure. Just give, please give us your name again.
Okay. My name is Mindy Muddy. My address is four 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 five Transit Road. Our property borders Murray Brothers, and so like directly to the south of the Murray Brother property. And I just wanted to understand the entire situation, like tonight there were a lot of residents in opposition. You mentioned the one email from somebody who was in favor of, but nobody tonight came to support the effort or the this cause. So aside from Verizon, who showed up tonight, John Murray wasn't here, I don't believe. Is there anyone else that's in favor of this project?
Not that has notified me.
Okay. So the majority of people in your town are opposed, at least.
I wouldn't say that.
Who is, who has spoken up?
The majority of the people in the area are opposed.
Are opposed.
I would not say the town.
So is there, is there a need, like are people expressing a need for a greater um cellphone coverage? And that that's what the tower is addressing, is that desire for more coverage? Because personally, we live right next door to Murray Brothers. We don't drop our calls. We we have Verizon service for our cellphone. Hmm, we don't experience dropped calls or problems of that nature, so what would be the?
Yeah. Do you want me to take this and?
Sure.
Yeah.
If you want.
Yeah. So I I think um, you know, the the concerns of the residents are obviously something that we all will take extremely importantly.
Sure.
Um, we do have a certain authority as this body, and that authority is not absolute. So we're not able to say, because you know, Mr. Murray does have the right to do what he wants to on his property to some extent, just as you do on your property to some extent. Um, we are subject to state laws and federal laws, and those both say things about this situation that we need to follow, and if we don't, then we're our, it is a big risk to the town because there would be litigation that follows it. So we have to, as a board, understand, and we, I think, we take out of this, at least me personally, I must be correct when we take out this, there is a a negative reaction to this within the neighborhood that we understand. Um, so I think that's that's clear, and you know, there's, there's no one that's going to come forward that is going to change that because there are enough people who have spoken out against it. Um, we have to look at the parameters, and we're able to make decisions. So there's court case after court case says that towns are not able to simply say no because of certain things that were brought up today, because of aesthetic reasons, because of um health reasons that are not um, you know, tied to something specific. We have a pacemaker issue that we need to look into. So I I think we we we're going to take a look, long time looking at this situation, understanding the concerns. Um. Uh, there is, there is a concern of mine that at the end of that road, there's really not going to be much that this body can do to stop the project going forward to to for the concerns of the residents. Maybe there's somewhere we can change something or do something else. Maybe we can find a reason to stop it or something like that. Um, but it's not as if the decision is completely up to us, and so we just say, well, every single resident of the town is against it, right? If a federal law says has to happen based on this and this and this, then then it does have to happen no matter what we say.
And that, that was what was said in the beginning.
Right.
When I said, when I said it, you know, there's the nineteen ninety six Communit- Telecommunications Act, federal. We, we have certain limitations that we can control, and that's all we can control. Now, we will look into every one of these, that's for sure, and make sure that and they have, but we'll make sure that all of those other options, you know, were seeped out and see if they, and see if they're viable.
And and if I may jump in real quick, I'm sorry, Chuck, I thought you were
Go ahead.
I would highly recommend you go to thetownofaurora.com. Uh, the app, full application is there, and it seems overwhelming, but it's broken down by exhibits, and those exhibits are indexed. So you can actually see what the carrier's justification is for needing the tower. It, you can see where the parameters, where where they identified the tower can go. You know, it there's, it's actually a wealth of information, and and I think it'll help clarify a lot of.
It's on the back of their property, kind of like in the middle, but for
Yeah, no, but I mean more like where they identify that the need for a cell tower exists, right? The area where it could go and provide the coverage that's needed.
I see.
So I just, I think, I found it very helpful myself.
Okay, so you're saying if a, if there's a federal mandate, then the town has no power over that, obviously.
Well, we're saying that provided they have crossed all their Ts and dotted all their Is for everything that is on that um that they're required to do. Uh, we are limited to the things that we can hold them to, such as the fence around it, such as the construction of the tower. Frankly, not a whole lot.
I see. Okay.
But we will confirm that all of, just as Councilman McCann just said, we will confirm that all of those requirements have been met.
Okay. I'll then say, as a neighbor of all the people who are here tonight and John Murray, um, at the Murray Brother property, I'll say, I'll, I'm going to register my opposition to it as well. So just for the record.
Sure.
Okay, thank you.
Sure. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Next, we'll do staff reports. Let's start with Liz. Chris? Doug?
See a trend.
Uh, thank you again for the support.
Thank you. Rod? Paul? Can I have a motion to approve the abstract?
So moved.
Motion by Joe, second by Luke. Any comments or discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried, and can I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Motion by Ray. Can I have a second?
Second.
Second by Joe. Comments or discussion? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Do you have anything to report?